All right, Madam Clerk, are you out there somewhere?
He's ready.
Yes, you are. Are you ready?
All right, Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
She's muted.
He was there.
There she is.
Here.
All right. Mr. Foyce?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
And Mrs. Juin?
Here. We're thoughtful tonight, Kelly, be kind to us.
All right, you would please all join me in a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. I think the pledge is led by Kelly Felkley.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda with an amendment. And the amendment is to, under Resolution Number Three, to change the dollar amount from $260,250 to $260,400.
And that's-
Second.
...of the November ninth regular session as proposed.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, all right.
We got a vote on that, Mayor.
Yeah, I was thinking. That is dangerous. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, thank you. First up, Kelly, do we have any- Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for our oral presentation?
We had one registered speaker, Dixon Stolkey, called in for five minutes tonight.
All right. Mr. Stokely, please state your name and address for the record and let us know your thoughts.
Dixon Stolkey, 421 Belmont Avenue. First, I apologize to the Waterloo School District for judging their decision poorly to keep classes in person during a COVID spike. I've since learned their hands are tied by laws, regulations, and funding streams all thornily intertwined, making going against the wishes of higher-ups in Des Moines a very bad idea. Last week, I cast a poor light on your decision without understanding your limitations. I'm sorry. Okay, moving on, we need to pressure the higher-ups instead that got our school district under their thumb. One key barrier to properly managing this pandemic is a general disbelief in science, a distrust of scientists who know the way to contain it. Baffling, but true, cure that and we'll have COVID-19 on the run. Can enough higher-ups and community members be persuaded to believe the science, to trust the scientists? What more could convince them now? Actually, we don't really have to convince anyone, really. People already do trust the science implicitly. It's true. We could not obliviously enjoy the furnace in our basement without trust in the scientists throughout the ages, building knowledge upon knowledge, discovering and inventing anything and everything humanity needs to know to put together complex systems like a safe, modern, reliable home furnace. Scientists down through history steadily compiling and passing knowledge on, all around the world, keeping up, keeping track, keeping at it, keeping each other honest by the rigors of the scientific method. Rigors they serve even now meticulously, successfully creating all the marvels of high technology and hope we share today. Truly, truly heroic. And all they ask in return is to just be left alone to make us more stuff. How can you not trust that? The proof is all around us. Every time anyone hops a plane, pulls a trigger, swallows a pill, they are believing the science, trusting the scientists with their very lives already. Nobody drank the Clorox for COVID like the President said, but why? Because the scientists said, "No, don't." It will take time, but people need only re-waken the trust they already harbor, trust the scientists have already earned, to know the scientists are right again, this time about COVID safety, and then they can join the rest of us, each doing their part, helping to keep their neighbors and loved ones and community members safe and alive all around the world, just like the scientists say. Okay, moving on, I once heard a saying from a famous judge, "Your right to swing your fist," says the judge, "ends at the point where the other fellow's nose begins." Your right to swing your fist ends, but does your right to throw rocks? Like in a busy parking lot, to swing a fist is okay when it stops on time, but to throw rocks, maybe hit someone, that right ends where the rocks leave your hand. You cannot un-throw your hurtling rocks. Going on masks these days is just like throwing rocks. Out in the open, nobody around, no harm. But going on masks can be a deadly assault in retail and other establishments posting mask-required signs. You cannot un-spew your COVID breaths. Furthermore, any establishment that allows unmasked patrons despite their mask-required sign is telling a lethal lie. That sign says it's safe to go in. Then I realize too late that this may be the very untimely contact that finally gets me. They don't allow rock throwing in the parking lot, so why random COVID spewing inside? What kind of business plan is threatening to kill off good customers anyway? Right now, this is the most endemic and insidious pro-pandemic activity, so stopping it in these businesses should have the most anti-COVID impact. I propose the city to make a website and hotline where people can report such places, listing them out online and in weekly press releases, so we, the people, can safely decide where to visit and where to avoid. This two-pronged approach would enable our more sensible citizens to avoid risky encounters while showing the business community just how much customers want those mask signs enforced. Plus, it would be a very caring thing for the city to do for the citizens of Waterloo. Thank you for hearing my thoughts. Okay, moving on, any questions?
No, sir. Thank you so much for coming back and also whatever conversations you had with the school system, too. Thank you so much. We appreciate your thoughts and your concerns as well, Mr. Strickland. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else that would like to address the council and mayor?
Yep, we've got people in the audience that'd like to address the council.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I'm going to speak on a two-month, two meetings per month. Observing several Courier articles about two meetings a month, I continue to see Mr. Morrissey's opposition to this. I agree. On any open comment time or agenda item, we're allowed three to five minutes to get answers we couldn't get after seeing the agenda on Friday, when almost nothing is accessible on Saturday or Sunday, leaving Monday only to get answers. Consent agenda items and work sessions allow little time to get answers, and a lengthy consent list still takes time to read each item. So therefore, going to two is going to lengthen that list. A suggestion to release the agenda to council on Monday, a week before the meeting, if you go to two meetings a month, is a great suggestion for council and citizens and should be incorporated now with the four meetings a month. I have heard the comment many times on agenda items. I'm not prepared to vote on this with so little time to form my decision and so little information. Should you decide to implement this, again, I suggest a mandate for monthly ward meetings by each council ward representative, so they can determine what the people they represent want, and well-publicized, so each one of those meetings can be attended to the max. I have said before, this is a republic, not a dictatorship run by elites. When ward representatives don't get input, this is what we get. My last 45 seconds, diversity for us. Being a police officer, firefighter, or paramedic is a calling, not to be taken lightly. The respect they receive is earned. All respect is earned by one's actions. Having spoken to various police chiefs, their prime concern is finding that right fit and their most difficult task. Again, it's not just a job, it's a calling. Thank you, just like nursing and doctors.
All right, thank you.
One more.
Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I would like to announce that we got a new watcher out there zooming in today. Her name is Emily. Be the first time she's zoomed in or came to a city council meeting. I would like to talk about more housing units planned for the Irv Warren Golf Course area. We're going to be giving $25,000 towards that from the city, and we are going to be developing four rental houses. Not long ago, in the paper, it stated that several of the council people wanted to incentivize people to get out of rental houses. They wanted to give them $5,000 each to move out of a rental house and buy a house. So for, we're going that way, why are we going to be giving $5,000 per unit to add four more houses? It also states in there that it will be paid back. Our investment will be paid back in two and a half years. We give you three years tax abatement. So if we give three years tax abatement, and a first year you don't pay taxes, so that's four years. So to me, it looks like it would be five and a half years before we see any return on our investment of this $25,000. So in those years, we would be paying interest on the loan, unless Michelle has a big cookie jar down there full of those $5,000 checks they want to give everybody. I think we need to think twice before we create more if we're going along the lines of eliminating or cutting down on rental houses and renters. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else, Mrs. Clerk?
Nope, no one else.
Anyone else in cyberspace? All right, council?
Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Who is that?
I heard a voice-
Mrs. Klein.
Okay, I think we all saw the Courier article about the petition that's going around about the Griffin. I had a lot of phone calls about that. A lot of people were upset about that, and I did not have an answer for them because the city council, as we are all aware, established that committee, which is led ably by two of our leaders here, Mrs. Juin and Mr. Bozen. And it was chosen evenly, this committee, and vetted by everyone, and we were working towards cooperation and hopefully harmony in the future. And then this wrench was thrown into the system by one of our own departments, which really bothered me, and I've got no answer to it. I heard today now through the grapevine that there's another petition going, so now instead of headed towards harmony, we're headed towards discord. And I'm so bothered by it, because we're trying to do our very best to do the right thing here and to hear from all the people. And it just offended me, is what it did, and it made me also respond to people who are interested in getting this on some sort of a ballot, so that we can have a referendum by every citizen instead of just a few now. It makes it more difficult to argue against that. And so I just wanted to make that statement, that I'm very upset that one of our own departments did this and caused this reaction, and now we have to deal with this reaction.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Juin, did you have something?
Yes, sir. Two things. I wanted to first thank Mr. Stolkey for his comments. And also, he made a suggestion that, Mayor, I don't know if we can pursue or have Mrs. Bowden look at it, but to have something on the city website where we do cite the businesses that are not in compliance with our mask mandate. I personally don't want to go into businesses if they're not mandating the mask. I just can't take that risk. So if that can be explored, I'd appreciate it. And then to Mrs. Klein's comments, I like what lies was very upset that one of our own city departments put out that petition, and then in response, the other side of the issue came up with their own petition. I absolutely beg that both sides of this issue give the committee time. Let them work through it. If at the end of their work, when they're ready to make their recommendation to the council, you don't like it, you don't agree with it, that's the time that you can take action. But for right now, please let the committee have a shot at this. Let's give it a chance for hopefully coming up with something that's agreeable to both sides of this issue. I implore everyone to be patient, give the committee time. And I should comment Mrs. Klein's comments, that Mr. Bozen and I are not leading this committee at all. We have Mr. Hall, Davis Hall, and our own Joe Leibold from the police force are the two co-chairs of this, and they're doing a great job. So please allow them to do their work. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With regards to the closures and stuff like that tonight as well, at six o'clock, I believe, the governor has a big announcement about COVID and COVID update that will be coming at six o'clock. Mr. Bozen?
Thank you, sir. AECom is going to have some meetings coming up, one tomorrow and one in December regarding the Port Road and Hess Road, and it's going to be open to the public and it's going to be open for public input and questions. But now that we're not having public meetings, would anybody be able to give us an update on how that's going to be handled?
All right, thank you, Mr. Bozen. I spoke with Jamie as well, and what's going to happen, all of those will be virtual. There was a press release that was sent out last Thursday, I believe, and I think I forwarded you a copy of that a couple minutes ago. And then also, the website, Facebook page, and the notice cards that went out to the residents that I think had signed up for those or that are impacted, they should be or should have received updated card information as well. So I know I just forwarded that to you probably 10 minutes ago, maybe, at the most, so they're on it. So you got it, and folks will be communicated with, so thank you. Council, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, as a member of the, or not a member, but as a liaison, one of the liaisons with the Human Rights Commission, I guess I take exception to a couple council people's statements. The Human Rights Commission is exactly that, is human rights. And this whole issue came up as far as the insignia on our law enforcement materials and vehicles and equipment and that because of a human rights issue, an issue that was extremely important and has been extremely important for some time with members of our own community. So as Human Rights, as a Human Rights Commission is named for, they had submitted a position paper which wasn't even read the night, August 24th, when we had all the discussion. I know I have reviewed both of the YouTube tapings of the insignia committee that's meeting to rebrand. And at the last one, Councilman or Councilwoman Juin had to explain to the entire committee what was happening, that the insignia as it currently exists was no longer going to exist come June 30th of 2021. And that's a correct statement, that's what's in there. The Human Rights Commission is concerned that people are thinking that if there's a tie vote, that that insignia stays. What I see is a petition, which I was very proud to sign, coming from the Human Rights Commission, is a statement to that fact, that that insignia is to be gone, and they, as a Human Rights Commission, see any kind of depiction of a Griffin in the future as just a furtherance of something that has been so abhorrent to them in their community as it has morphed into this very nasty kind of meaning. So I am proud of the Human Rights Commission, I'm proud of their voice, I'm very happy that I'm the liaison with that committee, and I would ask other people to sign on to that petition so that this issue is put to rest come next June 30th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Juin? You're on mute.
I would say that we did get the letter from the Human Rights Commission before our vote in August. What I was so upset about is that the city council took action. I thought it was very decisive action, it was unanimous, and we established a committee that was going to look at what's going to replace. We, the action that we took removed the existing insignia, and the committee needs to decide what it's going to be replaced with. The letter from the Humans Rights Commission, we got it before we took our action, to get it again in the form of a petition, was, it was totally inappropriate, it was, I thought, subversive to the actions of the committee that was established. That committee needs to be given a chance. And for that petition to come out saying that they wanted it banned, well, we'd already done that, but to say they didn't want any form of a Griffin, presuppose the action of that committee. So all I'm asking, first of all, I think the petition was totally inappropriate, but secondly, give the committee a chance to do their work. Don't presuppose what their decisions are going to be.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
For a councilperson to refer to the Human Rights Commission sticking up for human rights of individuals within our community as being inappropriate and being subversive is absolutely abhorrent. I would ask the councilwoman to retract those statements that are denigrating one of the most important departments that we have in the city of Waterloo. It's there to protect and to defend the human rights of every individual within the city of Waterloo.
Mr. Mayor?
So what, okay, and I'll go to Mrs. Klein, but what I want to say is, there is a committee right now, from day one, our names have been in newspapers, we've had conversations, we've seen petitions, the work of the committee is the reason that they are assigned. So I'm hoping that they will be free to do their job, but we also know that regardless, people feel on either one side or the other, they know that going in. So the commission, the committee is able to do their job. Outside's going to happen, but they are able to do their job. Mrs. Klein, your comments, and then let's move on.
I think Mr. Morrissey's way out of line to chastise anyone up here. I think this was done sneakily, it's behind the back, it's below, beneath us, beneath our behavior. Here's another thing, the people that called me said this, which this, this action has created this tension. The people that called me said, "The fix is in." If all the city departments are weighing in like this individually, the fix is in. And I keep saying, "It's not, it really is even Steven here." It is really a group of people trying to figure it out. But you know what? With this kind of attitude with one of our council people, with this kind of attitude with one of our administrators, perhaps the people are right. Let the people of Waterloo vote on this. Let every man and woman that has an interest in this express themselves through their vote. It's much cheaper in the long run than going further in this financial puzzle.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Klein. Mrs. Juin?
I am offended by Councilman's statement that I don't care about the commission. Of course, they stand up for the rights of the citizens, that is their role, and I appreciate that, and they had a chance to voice that concern before our vote. After that, after the council vote, it is city department's role to support what the council does, whether they like it or not, that's their role, and every department has done that with the exception of this one. And so I would ask, support what the council did, give the committee a chance, and we'll go from there. Enough said.
Can you close oral presentations?
I, is that what you wanted me to do?
Yeah, a couple times.
I'm sorry. Motion to close oral presentations, receive comments, and place on file.
Second. A motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Oral presentations closed.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition in 1A1 of the bill's payment amount of $1,338,885.68. Move or receive, approve, and place on file.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receiving, to approve publication, and those of public hearing on the snow removal contract for residential miscellaneous areas for city-owned lots generally acquired through Iowa Code 6578.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, hearing open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, close the hearing.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, etc., and authorizing to proceed.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion receiving file and instruct the city clerk to read the bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk.
All right, we had one bidder for this project. It was B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their total build, their total bid amount, excuse me, was $12.74 per lot, per occurrence.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion adopting resolution awarding bid to B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $12.74 per lot slash occurrence, approving the contract, bond, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the snow removal of residential or miscellaneous areas for the city-owned lots generally acquired through Iowa Code 657A, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Could someone take three, four, and five, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Number three is a resolution approving an application to the Blackhawk County Gaming Association in the amount of $20,000 for the Waterloo Aquatics Master Plan. Number four is a resolution approving the City of Waterloo Municipal Golf Rates for the 2021 season, and number five is a resolution approving a request by the City of Waterloo for the final plat of Waterloo Air and Rail Park, first edition, a three-lot commercial subdivision located east of 2510 Levercy Road, rescinding Resolution 2020-616 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
All right. All right, thank you. That motion's been made with a second. Counsel, anyone, any questions on these three items? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Could someone take six and seven?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Foyce.
Thanks, sir. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving electric distribution system proposal with Mid-American Energy Company in the amount of $327,736.50 for the construction and provision of electric lines along Levercy Road in conjunction with the Waterloo Air and Rail Park and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number seven is a resolution approving an amendment to the, to the development agreement with Robert Castro Construction originally executed July 24, 2017, adding infill policy incentives in the amount of $10,000 for the completed project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with a second. Counsel, or anyone with any, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes, sir, I had questions on both of those items, and, and they're both for Noel, and we'll start with the Mid-American one.
And Mayor, sorry, Mayor, Mr. Dilavu has a question as well.
I, I digress, please.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that, I'm not as quick as I used to be. Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. The address on this property that we want to give the incentive to, is that on Williston Avenue?
No.
Yes, it is, 1606 Williston.
I believe this property has been done for a long time, I believe it has also been sold. If this was an agreement at the time that he took this out, he should have been given his money when he was completed, and I think it is too late to go back and do it now. Thank you.
Noel, let us know what's going on with this one.
This is the property that we had acquired, oh, sorry, Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, this is the property we acquired through 657A, it was in pretty rough shape, we can definitely get some probably before and after pictures from anyone on council that would like to see that. Mr. Castro did recently get their certificate of occupancy for the building, so while the exterior may have been done for a while, I think there was still some interior work going on. He may have recently sold it. As noted in the council communication, development agreement was approved in July of 2017, the council had actually changed the policy for the incentive in February of 2017. Mr. Castro believed that he was getting that, there may have been an error in the staff form of the development agreement that went down, so we apologize for that, but he was definitely under the city policy eligible for the incentive noted.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, as long as we're discussing Williston, we'll start with that one. The development agreement was, was signed on, on July 24 of, of 2017, so we're, we're almost three and a half years into this development agreement, and both parties signed that development agreement, and nowhere in that development agreement was any incentives listed other than the, the down payment for the, for the house. Now, on, on, when we had two people bidding before, it was, it was $5,000 initial bid, and then we decided, like on the Logan Avenue, who, who had the better project. And this particular project, one bid $5,000, one bid $10,005. But the, the development agreement clearly stated that the developer was supposed to take out permits within 30 days, and the first permit didn't get taken out until February of 18, March of 18, two permits came out, two, two permits came out December of 18. And then the house did sell for the, the total, total permit value was $61,130, and then the $10,500 down payment, or $71,135, and then the, it appears the house sold in March of 2020, according to Blackhawk County Online, for $168,000. And I, and I will tell, tell, tell you that, 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 that house is a beautiful home. They, he did a tremendous job fixing, fixing that house up, but I, I'm, I'm apprehensive about these development agreements coming back three and a half years later to, to amend, to, to give money away that, that wasn't in the original agreement that was signed by both parties and, and reviewed by both parties, and hopefully reviewed by lawyers on, on the other side. So that, that, that's my two cents. On the, on the Mid-America one, and I, and I had conversations with, with Mr. Anderson on that, because I, I was really surprised that we have to, when we, when Mid-America serves Waterloo, the city of Waterloo, that we have to pay that, bring electricity into these stuff, these developments, and I do realize it's on the end of this Mid-America's line, because across the street is Cedar Falls Utilities, but on the $327,736, and it, and it says it's a refundable advance, but it, it, it's my understanding that it's, it's refundable depending on us selling the lots, developing the lots, and then buying electricity, is that correct, Noel?
That is correct.
So if, if these, all these lots don't get sold within the 10 years, because I was reading the contract, and it says we can't apply for the, for this refundable advance after the 10-year mark, so if some of these lots sit empty, we, it's a good possibility that we won't get this entire 327 back, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are my two questions.
All right, no comments?
No, I don't have anything additional.
All right. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jewin.
Um, brings up some good issues, and on number seven especially, if the original agreement didn't state anything about an incentive, why are we giving it to them now? When certainly he sold the house for quite a profit, why are we also going back and giving them money that we didn't initially agree to?
No, still questions unanswered.
Sorry, I was waiting for the train. Um, yeah, I mean, Mr. Castro came in and asked for his incentive, he, he believed he had it, we did show him the development agreement showing that that was not contained in there, even though it was after the date that that policy was created. He, he thought that it was, so we sent the amendment through with that process, talking with him. He has done some other houses prior to that, for some rehabilitation, and actually a small commercial building or two in the city of Waterloo, so he's been a good partner to us. But I, I, you know, I'm just going by his statement that he believed it was supposed to be included, it was after the date that would have made him eligible for it, so I'm not sure that there's any reason why, if it had been done correctly in July, that we would not have given him the incentive. But I, I don't know anything firsthand, I was not the staff person that, that originally worked on it, that I'm working on it.
But Mr. Anderson, if he signed an agreement that didn't have it in there, why would he think he was entitled to it if it wasn't in the agreement?
He, all I can tell you is what he told me, he, he said he thought it was in there, but it, but it obviously was not.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a, I have a problem with the leaky development agreements that we appear to have, where we're held to a standard, but other people don't obey their start dates, they don't obey their financial commitment dates. I, I'm kind of a stickler for this thing, and as a result, I can't support number seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, my question, are you, am I okay to speak, Mayor?
Yeah, I have my line muted, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, my question in all of this is, is it okay, I'm hearing that the application, everything was approved, and the $10,000 was already something that he should have been entitled to, so I guess my question is, is are we as a council, as a city obligated to pay that $10,000?
Noel, what happens if, if it's not paid?
Obviously, we do have, as was noted, we do have an agreement that was signed by both parties, so both parties would be, Marty can correct me if I'm wrong, but both parties are bound by that agreement, so I'm, I'm not sure that there's any recourse, other than, other than, like I said, Mr. Castro, Castro would have been eligible for during that time period, it was just not in the agreement that ended up being signed.
So, so would that have been an oversight, or just he wasn't seeking it at that time?
Based on my conversations with him, he thought he was eligible for it, so it, it appears to be an oversight by staff, but again, I was not the firsthand person that worked on it to know 100% one way or the other.
So Noel, realistically, he should be eligible to get that, even though it was not put in the agreement at that time? If, if someone would have caught it, then he would have been eligible to receive it.
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, uh, uh, is our city attorney online?
I am, but I, I apologize, I have not seen this agreement, so I'm not really in a position to comment.
Well, I, my, my only question would, would we possibly subject ourselves to some kind of legal action if we don't approve this?
Possibly, yes, but again, I, I, I'm not comfortable giving an opinion when I haven't really, I haven't, I have not looked at this, at this contract.
But I, I guess what I'm asking, uh, City Attorney Peterson, is if Mr. Castro is believing that he's entitled to this, couldn't that be grounds for a legal action, amounting to $10,000? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, sir. Anybody can, can seek legal judgment against anybody for, for any reason, whether it's frivolous or not, this was a contract that was signed by the city, it was signed by Mr. Castro. I, I don't know who, I, I'm, a question for Noel, before these development agreements go out, who, who reviews them?
Generally, we have an attorney drafted, but that would be drafted based on the staff person's write-up of, of what we need in it, and then ultimately, I would be the one that would review it going to council.
And then, and then who signs it?
It is signed by the applicant to send to council, and then after council approval, it's signed by the mayor and city clerk.
City clerk, so the applicant would have reviewed this, this, this agreement, and then, or hopefully had his attorney review it and then sign it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Klein.
Um, I have a question for our attorney, and that question is this, if Mr. Castro missed his development deadline to start, isn't that, doesn't that make that contract null and void?
No. Well, I mean, typically a contract would contain in the contract a remedy if, if a party, you know, doesn't perform on time. I'm not familiar with whether or not this contract does that, provides for a remedy.
May we ask Mr. Anderson if it has that sort of remedy in it?
Mr. Anderson.
We generally have some wording in there about, about the start date, I'd have to go back and, and check the dates that, that Councilman Bozen noted about permits being taken out, and that there was some kind of a, a, a delay in getting it, getting it deeded or something like that, that generally there's some wording in there about making sure that we get it deeded over and, and start dating all that, so I'd have to check.
The date, so.
Mayor, just to finish up before I'm done, since I came on here, I've been upset about development contracts dating back to the, what I inherited as I came on here, and that was a development contract for the Sullivan Center. It seemed to me that our contracts really need to be tightened up, we need to get, we need to be serious about the dates that we set in them, we need to be serious about the performance of the developers.
Mr. Bozen.
That, that's all, I, I, I want to just, when, the dates I gave Mr. Anderson are, are correct, it, it was, uh, July 24, 2017, and permits and construction were to begin by August 31 of 2017. And as I said, the first permit came out February of 18, March of 18, December of 18, and it was sold in March of 2020.
All right, so, so I would probably say, right now, there is a huge push to going in and fixing up dilapidated houses, 657 houses, uh, the road to actually remodeling projects don't always follow a, a straight route. You have a developer that did do that, did sell the property, wants to come back, thinks that they were eligible for some more incentive, based upon the changes we make, so, uh, counsel, if you don't, don't approve of that going back, but fixing up these houses is a good thing, whether or not the time constraint worked out, that's, that's another one, whether or not he was eligible. So I would probably say, hopefully you're appreciative of the work, but if you don't want to, uh, give the additional incentive, then, I mean, don't, I mean.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Jewin.
I would just say, I very much appreciate the work of Mr. Castro, I appreciate any developer that's willing to fix up any of the, the homes, especially the 657, but I would say that shame on us if we didn't include the incentive in the agreement, but shame on him for not reading that contract closely enough to realize that it wasn't there. So he signed a contract that did not have the incentive included. I don't think we have any exposure for just adhering to what was in the contract that both parties signed, and therefore I can't support this either. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, uh, uh, a question for Noel, Noel, how many projects has Mr. Castro been involved in for the city, uh, like this? Uh, his name has come up, it, it seems like every year on one or two different projects for infill properties, and how far back does that go, Mr. Anderson?
And I apologize, I, I didn't get a chance to look up all of the projects he worked on, I know he's done at least two 657A houses, and he's built a, a, uh...
Uh, his name has come up, uh, it, it seems like every year on one or two different projects for infill properties. Um, and how far back does that go, uh, Mr. Anderson?
And I apologize, I, I didn't get a chance to look up all of the projects he worked on. I know he's done at least two 657A houses, and he's built a, a, uh, a small commercial building, uh, between Sixth and Eighteenth Street on, on an empty lot that was in that area as well. So he's done some good infill projects for us. He may have done three 657As, uh, houses. I just have to, I'd have to look that information up.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes on six, no on seven.
Mr. Greider.
Yes on six, no on seven.
Mrs. Juin.
Yes on six, no on seven.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes on six, no on seven.
Mr. Amos.
Yes on both.
Mr. Morrissey.
All right.
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein.
Yes on six, no on seven.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Your turn, thank you.
Thank you.